Okay.
Oh my God, it was like a TV movie.
Good.
Okay, thank you. Hi, everyone. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for joining us here in Council Chambers. Thank you for joining us on BevCam, if that's how you're joining us. And our thanks to Kim in the BevCam booth, as always, for keeping us streaming and accessible for those who are joining us from their own council chamber space, who are watching us later at your convenience. Thank you so much. We do have a very full agenda this evening, and we have four public hearings, among some other things, a couple of resolutions to celebrate some folks, and a presentation update on the City Hall renovation project. So we will be moving through, keeping things to their times. Public hearings do have to be opened at the time they're posted, although if we're in the midst of something that needs to keep going, we may open and recess one. So if you're following along and it feels like the meeting is jumping a little bit, I'll do my best to try to explain why and where we're going and what will happen next. After we take care of those items, we have some routine business. We'll take a break for some subcommittee work, and then we'll be back here in the chamber to finish it all up. So with that, I'll officially call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council, Monday, June 16th, 2025, 7:00 PM. Ms. Kent, will you please call the roll? Bowen?
Here.
Crowley?
Here.
Feldman?
Here.
Housman?
Here.
Rotundo?
Here.
Spang?
Here.
St. Halir?
Here.
Sweeney?
Here.
And Flowers? Here. Thank you, Ms. Kent. Counselor Feldman, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And I'd ask that we remain standing for a moment of silence for legislators who are affected by violence in Minnesota and all those who are impacted.
(inaudible) The United States of America, the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Counselor Feldman, for leading us in that Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you to all those joining in that moment of silence. I think especially as we gather here in a place of public government, a chamber open to the public, thinking about the importance of having free democracy and legislative bodies free to meet and discuss without a fear of violence, and certainly for all of us as well as citizens. So thank you. We do have, as I mentioned, two resolutions that we will get right to because it's some great celebratory moments. I'd like to start with Order 189. Counselor Rotundo and Counselor Sweeney, would you like to go to the podium and introduce your resolution?
Madam President, thank you. It's an honor to be able to recognize Nick Perianos. I want to thank the fire chief for bringing this to our attention, as well as a couple of the other firefighters for this action. Resolution recognizing, and am I saying your name correct?
Perianos.
Okay, I am. Perianos, for his bravery and dedication to public safety. Whereas on May 23rd, 2025, at 7:15, Nick was traveling through the North Beverly neighborhood when he observed smoke and quickly identified a residence showing signs of chimney fire and...
Whereas Mr. Perianos took immediate action by approaching the home, alerting the occupants to the danger, and assisting with evacuation as smoke began to build within the structure and...
Whereas upon arrival of fire crews, it was confirmed that there were active fires in both the fireplace and a wood burning stove on the first floor. Excessive smoke and embers visible at the chimney cap, and a light smoke condition throughout the home, indicators of a potentially serious chimney fire with risk of extension into the walls and...
Whereas thanks to Mr. Perianos's swift response and early warning, emergency personnel were able to arrive promptly, extinguish the fires, access the roof to remove the chimney cap, and take essential measures to prevent the fire from spreading into the interior of the home and...
Whereas Mr. Perianos's decisive actions, commitment to public safety, and concern for others played a critical role in preventing a greater damage and potential harm to the home's residents and...
Whereas Mr. Perianos honorably served in the United States Marine Corps from 2013 to 2017 as an armorer in the 3rd Battalion, 6th Marines stationed in Jacksonville, North Carolina, deploying with his unit in 2014 and attaining the rank of Sergeant, and was appointed to the Beverly Veterans Council in the fall of 2023 and...
Whereas Nick is a dedicated wellness teacher at Mascanomic Regional High School in Bauxfit, where he not only supports the physical and emotional well-being of his students, but also plays a vital role in Masco's unique emergency medical service program, a pioneering initiative that trains and mentors the next generation of first responders.
Whereas through this program, Mr. Perianos helps prepare students to serve in lifesaving roles at a time when communities across the Commonwealth and the nation are facing a critical shortage of EMTs, thereby strengthening the region's emergency response capacity while instilling a deep sense of civic responsibility in his students.
Whereas he is also a devoted husband to his wife Emily and a proud father to his daughter Sophia and son Lucas.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Beverly City Council does hereby formally commend and recognize Nick Perianos for his courage, swift action, and ongoing service to the community. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered into the official record of the city of Beverly, and that the city clerk spread a copy of this resolution upon the city records. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you. I didn't have anything prepared, but I really appreciate the recognition. I kept saying, I think anybody with common sense would have done the same thing, and it kind of got me ruminating on the fact that like our fire department, our police, they do this every single day. I was kind of confident that it was just a chimney fire that hadn't actually entered into the structure, but these guys go into like the actual structure fires every single day. So endless praise to them, and it kind of reiterates the concept that I always tell my students, which is if you see something, say something. So again, thank you.
Thank you very much, counselors, and thank you, Mr. Perianos. Thank you for your service certainly as a United States Marine, and thank you for your service to your fellow community members as well. Counselors, I would entertain a motion to officially approve Order 189. That is the resolution that we just heard honoring Mr. Perianos. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries nine zero. Thank you very much. That is officially approved. And we will take a recess after both our resolutions. So Mr. Perianos, I hope that you can remain with us for a little bit if folks want to be able to take pictures, and so that everyone can congratulate both of our recipients as well. We do have another resolution, Order 190, and Counselor Spang and I will go to the podium for this one. This is a resolution in honor of Montserrat College of Arts Chief of Staff and Dean of College Relations, Jo Stuart Broderick, on the occasion of her retirement, presented by the Beverly City Council with great appreciation for the dedication, vision, and collaborative work of our esteemed honoree. Whereas Jo Stuart Broderick is retiring from her role as Chief of Staff and Dean of College Relations for Montserrat College of Art at the end of June 2025, after over 36 years on the job, having held numerous leadership roles as an active leader in the community, and having collaborated with city, state, and federal agencies, thus strengthening Montserrat's connections with the community.
Whereas throughout her tenure, Jo played a pivotal role in positioning Montserrat as a premier small arts college and a regional leader in the arts. Her oversight has included all aspects of media relations, public communications, marketing publications, civic engagement, and institutional events, including commencement. She also managed the college's website, social media presence, and print materials while fostering key government and community partnerships. Jo also served as the internal lead on Montserrat's most recent presidential search.
Whereas Jo has been an active leader in the community over the years, serving as president of the Beverly Rotary Club, president of the Beverly Chamber of Commerce, co-president of Beverly Main Streets, board member of the Greater Beverly YMCA, and board member of the North of Boston Convention and Visitors Bureau. She currently serves on the advisory board for the House of Seven Gables. She has received numerous honors for her service, including the Leslie S. Ray Award for Community Service and a Paul Harris Fellow Award from the Beverly Rotary Club.
Whereas over her 36-plus-year tenure, Jo established and expanded Montserrat's Town Gown Relations Program, partnered with the Beverly City Council to help implement and update the college's Payment in Lou of Taxes program, and has served on the Board of the North Shore Alliance for Economic Development.
Whereas Jo came to Montserrat after 10 years serving as a reporter for the Salem Evening News, covering a broad spectrum of stories from presidential candidates and local elections to cultural events and legislative changes. She served on the Board of the Newspaper Guild and was a founding member of the North Shore Press Club. She holds a bachelor's degree in English and Journalism from the University of Massachusetts.
Whereas in the words of a local resident, Jo is the glue that holds this community together, and her open-minded collaboration, coupled with her ability to listen, led to creative problem-solving from which the Greater Beverly community has benefited and...
Whereas Jo also created and manages the Sixth District Congressional Art Exhibition and Awards Show each year, celebrating high school artists. This year, 23 local artists were recognized from 22 local high schools.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Beverly City Council does hereby congratulate, thank, and honor Jo Stuart Broderick upon the occasion of her retirement, wishing her much happiness, success, good health, interesting travels, and joy in the years to come, and orders that the city clerk spread a copy of this resolution upon the city records.
I want to thank the members of the city council, past and present, and the mayor, and former Mayor Scanlon as well, for all the partnership that we've had with the city of Beverly and Montserrat. Montserrat's an integral part of this community, and I know that this city values it, and I hope and pray that that will continue for the next 150 years. Thank you for this honor. It means a lot to me. Thank you.
Jo said before we started reading, wow, that's a lot of words, but as you can tell, that's a lot of years of dedicated community service. So thank you, Jo, and thanks for being here with us. I would entertain a motion to officially approve Order 190. That is the resolution we just heard honoring Jo Broderick.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That carries nine zero as well and is officially approved. Counselors, I would entertain a motion to take a five-minute recess so that we can congratulate both our honorees and leave time for pictures in the chamber, anything that families and friends may like.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I'll take a recess and be back. Thank you. Thank you so much, everyone. I'll call the full council back to order. Again, with our congratulations and our thanks, both to Nick Perianos and Jo Broderick, our two honorees this evening. So grateful to have them with us, with their families, friends, members of our veterans board as well. And thank you to Counselor Rotundo, Counselor Sweeney, Counselor Spang, for making it possible for us to honor those very deserving folks. What a gift it is to have people like that as part of our community. We do have one presentation, as I mentioned, and so I think what we'll do is we'll go to the presentation. Mayor, thank you. And then I will just need to pause us at 7:30 to open the first hearing, and I'll recess it so we can do the full presentation. I know I had a chance to talk to your team, and they said they thought their presentation would be pretty tight and leave some time for questions, and we had talked about capping the whole thing no longer than 20 minutes. So just if people are following, I don't want you to think I'm cutting them off. We'll have time for more conversation as well. So Mayor Cahill, thank you for being here with us, and we'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Madam President, and thanks, members of the council, for giving us a little bit of time. We knew it's been a bit of time since you've heard about the City Hall project and wanted to make sure that you got a bit of an update before summer. So we are all available afterwards for questions, but let me just introduce the two team members who will be presenting. First is Maria Ana Hadziliadis of Colliers, our owner's project manager, and following her will be David Lightman from Feingold, our architectural design firm. So, Maria Ana?
Hi, I'm Maria Ana Hadziliadis from Colliers Project Leaders. We are the owner's project manager on the project. And we were in front of you about a year ago, and we had asked for a special permit on the demolition, a special permit for the demolition of the annex building that used to house the police department, and also for variance on, for variance in the height for the new structure that was going to take its place. And since then, the Feingold Alexander team has gone through schematic design and has currently started with design development, and we are assisting the city with getting a construction manager on board using the 149A process. So now I'll give the floor to the Feingold Alexander team to go through the updates of the design.
Thank you, Maria Ana. Thank you, Mayor Cahill, and thank you to the council. It's a pleasure to speak with you again. Last time we spoke, we were just still in feasibility, so we're pleased to provide updates to where we are. So this is just an overview currently of what the current City Hall configuration is. We have the existing building here that we are in currently, and then the annex, the former police station. And in our vision for the completed project, essentially the footprint will remain the same, except for this highlighted orange area that will extend south towards Thorne Dyke. And in this reconstructed annex, it will be taller with two floors throughout, and then a third-floor zone for a new elevator and stair, which I'll show to you momentarily. The parking lot, which currently has 33 spaces, will be reconfigured to be 30 spaces, and with that is because we have the extended annex to the south, and then the area highlighted in gray will be elevated to provide better access between the two buildings. So I want to highlight some kind of the important parts of this project, and really this is really what the project is all about. In the vision of the completed project, there will be 17 city departments within the building. Currently, there is 14. The Health Department, Municipal Inspections, and Retirement, who previously was in the building, will all now come back into the building. So the 17 departments will be housed here. There will be space for 89 staff. Currently, I believe there's about 65 in the building. There will be additional, public transaction windows will be secure to, for the staff, as well as department items that are beyond those windows. Currently, in the current City Hall, there's about, I believe, six public restrooms. In this new configuration, there will be 14, seven of which will be fully accessible. I believe only one is fully accessible currently, and there will all be gender-neutral restrooms. This is a huge improvement to the City Hall than what is there today. We are also accommodating a mothers' room for staff who might be, for families who might need that space. With the new space, we're also accommodating different ways for people to meet and collaborate. So there's going to be four phone booths for individuals who have private calls, and seven meeting rooms within the building. Currently, there's only two, this council chambers, and then the committee room next to us. So there'll be seven private rooms throughout the building for staff to meet or opportunities for the public to come and engage with city staff. Additionally, I want to talk about accessibility. As I mentioned, there's going to be a new rear entry in the back, the modified entry in the back, and there'll be a new ramp to allow those who might need a ramp to access, and there'll be a second elevator for that. Additionally, throughout the building, we modernize security with cameras and card access to different departments. The building will be all-electric with new mechanical systems that will provide increased efficiency and controls throughout the building. Throughout, we'll have new ceilings and lighting, updated the lighting that is currently in the building. In general, the whole building will be more efficient. There'll be a clear path between what is the annex and this existing City Hall. And through this whole process, the city is also beginning to digitize many of the files, and so we will have better dedicated space for file storage, but it'll be reduced through that digitization. I'm going to quickly run through some of the plans so you have a sense of how these updates are conveyed through the space. So this is level one, and the couple of things I want to highlight here is that the corridor, first of all, this dashed line is indication the separation of the existing City Hall and then the annex or the former police station. We'll have, in red, we have the private conference rooms, and so on level one, we have three. And here you can see that we have the Health Department and Retirement, which I said is currently off-site. Up on the second floor, we have an additional conference room, the mothers' room, and note that in this corner, we have the restrooms. Like I said, they will all be up to code. 50% of the new restrooms will be fully accessible and modernized. And last, up on the third floor, this is the floor that we are going to retain many characteristics of this council chambers, including the elements of the dais and then the desks that you're currently sitting at, and with additional meeting spaces. And then fortunately, on this level, which currently doesn't have any restrooms, there'll be, we'll have six restrooms on this floor. And then here, you can see the elevator and stair tower, which will, the new elevator and stair tower, which will connect all levels. And if we go down to the basement level, this will be not accessible via the public, but city staff will have access to the IT department, which will remain in its current configuration. We'll have a larger mechanical area to accommodate the new systems, and then a large department storage that will be modernized and properly accessible for those who need to traverse through there. I'm going to quickly go through some images to show you what this is going to look like. This is the existing aerial, and this is, what is in yellow here is the reconstructed annex. The current City Hall essentially will remain aesthetically as it is currently. Then here from the rear, looking at Abbott Street on the bottom, we're mindful of the configuration, and so we are keeping the existing foundation, so the footprint, like as I mentioned, will remain the same. And then some views of what that will all look like. This is our proposed design, where the south facade facing Thorne Dyke will be brick, and the rear facade will be a fiber cement siding. Given uncertainty in market conditions, we have two options as well to understand that maybe there's a possibility that we can get all brick throughout, as well as potentially, if needed be, that the entire building could be fiber cement siding. Thank you so much. I appreciate the time and looking forward to hearing more.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Actually, your timing is really perfect because it brings us right to 7:30, which means I can open and then recess this hearing. So you're right on the dot. Thank you for that as well, in addition to your presentation. So we will open our posted public hearing on Order 77A that's posted for 7:30. Ms. Kent.
City of Beverly ordered that the City Council of the City of Beverly to hold a public hearing on Monday, June 16, 2025, at 7:30 PM at 191 Cabot Street, Third Floor Council Chambers, relative to an amendment to Chapter 270, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 66, Downtown Beverly Parking District, Pleasant Street. And this was in the newspaper on June 6.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Councilors, I would entertain a motion to recess this hearing to 8:40 PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we'll pick that back up at 8:40. Thank you. It's recessed until that time, and so we do have some time now. Am I correct in thinking that was the end of the presentation? So we do have some time for questions from the council, and I am going to hold this to no more than 10 minutes. So if we don't get to everybody, like I said, we will, we will come back to this conversation. Councilor Sweeney and Councilor Rotundo, I saw you two first, and then Councilor St. Hillary.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the team here for the presentation. The big question, which I'm sure is on all of our mind, is cost. So coming out of the feasibility study, do you have an estimate of what the cost of the renovations that you presented are at this time?
So we have our city finance director, Mr. Brian Ailes, coming up to the podium. Thank you, Mr. Ailes.
Yeah, thank you very much. You know, the rest of the team, please chime in if I, if you feel I missed something relevant to the, to the conversation. But as many of you know, there's a process involved with arriving at a, at a full cost out of a project like this. You go through the preliminary kind of estimate design phase, which is a schematic design. The team has completed that, and based on that, they do a preliminary assessment of the costs at that point in time. Then it moves into what's called the design and development phase, where they refine all of the design elements, and that is really a much more refined approach to the costing. They do another costing at the end of that. At the end of the schematic design phase, we were about $27 million for the construction. We, about two and a half to three years ago, when we first began really getting serious about this project, we at that point were holding a $25 million placeholder. So we're within a reasonable range, two and a half years later, with the cost increases that we're seeing in the industry in terms of imported goods, potential tariffs, things of that nature that are driving up some of the costs. But the design team has been really good about trying to engineer things in a way that get the most effective use within the project, but also try to contain the costs. So right now, we still feel as though this next phase, the design development, there'll be further opportunity to refine those figures a bit, but we still feel we're within the target. As you all know, because you've seen the capital expenditure plan, we've always held a $25 million placeholder in our debt budget. And today, as I stand here, that $25 million debt authorization is still affordable within the 5% debt allocation that exists in the budget. So years out, it never creeps up over 5% with this project layered in at $25 million in borrowing. As you're aware, we also have a $2 million stabilization fund specific for debt that may become part of the project when, when we're all said and done. And then in addition to the, to the hard construction costs, there will be some costs that the city will need to incur for temporary relocation. So that's kind of an overview of where we're at, but we feel we're within a reasonable range, given where we were kind of targeting two and a half to three years ago when we first started this process.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes, and I'm sure there will be other questions about the relocation, so I'll avoid that, but I do want to just follow up quickly. Are you anticipating coming before the council for a supplemental, the administration coming before the council for a supplemental appropriation to get through the design phase, or do you think there's enough funding to get through the design phase, and it won't be until bids are in hand, that you, the administration comes back before the council for an appropriation?
So we're in the process of bringing on, as Maria Ana mentioned earlier, we're bringing on the CM at Risk to come onboard through the tail end of the design development phase. What that allows is the, the construction company that's actually going to be doing the work to actually review the design documents, have some input into what things are costing in the real world, what they're seeing in their industry with their subs, et cetera. So once we reach the end of design development, which so far, the $1.5 million that was originally appropriated by the council a couple of years ago, is carrying us through that phase, where we're able to cost out the design development elements. At that point in time, we'll be able to refine the cost estimates, come back before the council, and say, here's the total project budget at this point. We've had input from the construction company, we've had input from the design team, the designs are further along, so we're more confident in those figures, and at that point, we would seek a full authorization, which would be the remainder of the cost in some form of a loan authorization, and possibly transfer from some of the debt stabilization funds that we have set aside as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ailes.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Rotundo, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I was looking, as you are showing us each floor, and I know I brought this up several times, specifically in the basement with the records storage. I'm assuming, is that going to be climate control, and is it sufficient enough to hold the records that we have right now? We have records that date back to 1700s and maybe even the 1600s.
Yes, we've been working with our mechanical engineers and electrical engineers to ensure that the records are in a safe space, so the humidity and temperature will be monitored there and controlled.
And the second question, I guess, is the 200 square feet adequate for what we have for existing, because some of them aren't even in the existing room right now?
Right. So, so there's, there's two areas to department storage. There's the, the record storage, which is per state laws, essentially, it's a rated enclosure for public records, certain types of public records, and then the remaining area is, is additional records. So the, we're imagining the entire records area to be, to be monitored.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor St. Hillary.
Thank you, Madam President. So this appears to be the plan for City Hall rebuild. What, what about the Family Dollar piece in the renovation there? Is that a separate project? Is there anything associated with that? What is the plan, I guess, with, with staff?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Madam President. Counselor, as, as you may remember, when we, we didn't, we didn't buy the Family Dollar store to move there for City Hall, but we looked at it once we were buying it and said, hey, let's give it a good look, because it may be a, a good alternative. We ended up spending time costing out what it would take to, to be able to go in there with our staff for a year and a half to two years, and it was going to cost us close to $2 million when we costed that out. So we decided at that point that it didn't make sense. So instead, we've been working to get, to get some sense of what's possible there, and we'll be having a public meeting, I'd say, the week after the Fourth. Week of the Fourth isn't a good, a good week to try to get people's attention, but by mid-July, we'll be having a public meeting to start sharing what we know and, and asking for public input on how to RFP the store, because we all want to get it, we want to get an RFP out on the street, and we get, want to get somebody to invest and bring it back to life as soon as possible.
And that would give us an idea of the cost? Is that what you're saying?
Say that again?
An RFP for what?
Oh, the RFP would be to sell it.
Okay.
Right? So we'd be selling the building and retaining the ownership of the parking spaces.
And what about the staff during the construction?
Well, we've already been looking around. I can also tell you, though, that, you know, we'll need to RFP that. It'll have to strictly follow state procurement law to, to secure temporary space. So, so yes, we've been looking around, just inquiring to get a sense of what to expect for cost, and our preference will be to try to stay in the downtown. That's been the preference all along. If, if that's not possible, we'll have to look a little further out to some of the industrial space, but hopefully it won't come to that, but it'll, it'll have to go through an RFP process, and then we'll know. And we can't do that until after we've got project budget approval on the project, right? So as, as Mr. Ailes said, you know, it'll be late this calendar year, early next calendar year, that we'll be before you folks with a proposed total project budget that we'll be asking for you to approve. And so it'll, it'll depend on, you know, what happens between now and then and the results of that process, as to whether we go out for temporary space. I certainly hope we will. I mean, you know, I think we all understand, this is a building that hasn't been significantly improved since 1939, and I think, you know, you see some of the, the benefits. I, I don't think it was mentioned during the presentation, though, that we have no real HVAC system in this building. First and second floors have none, third floor has a very substandard one. I know you're looking at the window, Council President. Yeah. So, you know, the, all of that is going to be needed. One thing I just want to anticipate, David mentioned phone booths. They're not really phone booths. Those, those phone booths is what we're calling small spaces that staff can use if, I mean, you see the suites and you see shared workspaces. If somebody needs to, to have a private conversation, they can go in one of those smaller rooms. If they need to participate in a remote or hybrid type of meeting remotely, more, more than just listening, if they need to actually interact, they can go there and they can have a conversation. I know that isn't what was asked, but I figured I'd share it. Did that, did I answer your question, though, Counselor St. Hillary?
Yeah, and I guess just to clarify, if I may, are those costs contained in the $25 million, or would that be separate additional costs?
The, the, Mr. Ailes?
The target we, the target we've always shared has been $25 million in construction, and we had a placeholder of one and a half in those relocation costs. That's definitely on the high side from what we're seeing. We think two years of relocation costs will probably be with moving and everything about a million. So those are the two pieces. And so today, when we're comparing costs, and I say 27, that's compared to the 25, so it's about $2 million more than it was when we were putting a target on it two and a half years ago.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. I'm not wanting to cut off the rest of the council, but I am noticing the time, and I know that we will have more opportunities to have the team back and to really get a further update. So I'm going to pause us here. Thank you to the team for being here for the presentation. Having these regular updates, I think, really is beneficial for the council, as we know that we've got this project proposal out there and coming down the road. Mayor, thank you for bringing the team together. Mr. Ailes, thank you for your help as well. Counselors with questions? We will have more conversation. I also imagine we could also reach out through Mr. Ailes or through the mayor to the team if you have an immediate question. So thank you. Thank you again for your presentation. Thanks for your time, and we'll look forward to more conversation in the future. We have, I think, enough time before our next hearing to go to our one resident speaker who has signed up. Vice President Crowley is ready to keep the time. Mr. Paul Hansen-Matev has signed up as our resident speaker this evening, and we do have these spots available at all of our regular meetings. I like to always make sure to explain, they're available to be signed up for. There are five, up to five, three minutes a person, and you can do so by contacting the city clerk's office no later than 9:30 AM, the morning of the meeting. Mr. Hansen-Matev, if you'd like to go to the podium, Vice President Crowley will keep the time, and we do keep them to three minutes. So if you would begin with your name and address for the record, and when you hear the timer go off, please draw your remarks to a close. Thank you. And thank you, Vice President Crowley.
Good evening to City Council. My name is Paul Hansen-Matev. I reside at 25 Vine Street in Ward 6, Precinct 1. Today, uncharacteristically, I have prepared remarks. Individual freedom and belonging are both of enormous importance to us. We never take these rights away from each other. This concept protects both our freedom and our belonging at all service levels by assuring each of us that we can expect respectful consideration, whether we fit into the majority or the minority at any point in time. The right of appeal assures that dissenting opinions will be heard. The right of petition assures that any trusted servant can always petition for resolution of a grievance. The right of appeal, found in this concept, reminds us that we need to listen with consideration to everyone and encourage those with differing opinions, minorities, to state their views. Inviting those in the minority to speak out and listening to them with full hearts and consideration helps us maintain unity. When we hear, understand, value, and incorporate minority opinions into our decision-making process, we may avoid mistakes that can occur when we are angry, hasty, misinformed, or rigid. Practicing consideration compels a thorough debate, keeps us all focused on the issue at hand, and validates the worth and dignity of each member. We recognize, by applying this concept, that even substantial majorities sometimes can be wrong, and that we are all served best by encouraging a full and fair discussion of issues. A minority feels strongly that the majority is in error, has not only the right, but also the duty to speak out or to file a report stating their views as a minority report. It takes courage, dare I say, fearlessness, to speak up when we are in the minority. Having permission and even the obligation to do so without prejudice or fear of reprisal often strengthens our courage. Sometimes, in the heat of debate, we can only see things in terms of winning or losing. And for next time, I'll discuss further what winning or losing might mean in another context. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, Mr. Hansen-Matev, and thank you also for your patience with our scheduling. Of course, this is a meeting spot that has to move around a little bit as we go through our agenda, so thank you for your, your patience as well. That brings us to our next posted public hearing, and I want to mention that members of the public who are here now or following along, looking to come to one of our public hearings, can sign up to speak in the public hearing using the sign-up sheets that are on the table over by the window, by this council door, chamber door, and we will take public speakers on each topic. We do have many public hearings, so just check to make sure you're signing up for the topic you want to speak on. We will take the public speakers in the order that they are signed up. So we'll go to our 7:45 posted public hearing on Order 177. Ms. Kent.
City of Beverly ordered that the City Council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, June 16, 2025, at 7:45 PM at 191 Cabot Street, Third Floor Council Chambers, relative to a transfer request of $3 million from the city's certified free cash balance placed into the city's road and sidewalk capital fund. And this was in the news on June 6.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. I see that Mr. Ailes is headed to the podium already, so Mr. Ailes.
Good evening, everybody. This is something that should not come to surprise, as a surprise to many of you. We've been speaking over the last couple of weeks regarding our budget for the FY26, the mayor's budget proposal. Within that budget proposal, a lot of discussion's been had about the strategy to shift the road and sidewalk allocation to a free cash transfer. So that's what this is before you this evening. It's a request to transfer $3 million from the city's certified free cash balance into the road and sidewalk paving fund to cover roadwork associated with FY26. So that's it in a nutshell. Happy to answer any specific questions, if you have any.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ailes. Our city council, city council budget analyst, Mr. Perry, is here with us. Mr. Perry, I know you're available for questions, but I didn't know if you wanted to add anything or offer anything at the beginning here.
Sure. Good evening. I wrote to you folks over the weekend. I do recommend you do this, you can afford it. I gave you in my report a reconciliation of where free cash is at. Should you pass this tonight, as well as you have another public hearing on the Centennial Fund of $100,000, if you do both of them, you will have $4,907,368 and 84 cents left over in free cash. I'm okay with it as your budget analyst. I would just suggest, as I indicated in my report, I don't think you should be spending any more money on free cash. We're kind of running out of time anyways, but bottom line, Madam President, members of council, I do recommend adoption of the proposal. of council, I do recommend adoption of the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Members of the council, councillor Bowen, thank you.
Thank you. One thing that I think is always helpful at this time of year is to get a sense for what we expect free cash may be replenished at. So wondering, I know it's always a moving target because departments have not closed out this fiscal year yet, and we know from the budget process that we have projections through year end. So just curious where that leaves us, knowing what the pressure will be for that free cash in coming years, both for this line item and for others.
Yes, councillor Bowen, our stated target range is 3% to 8% of the annual operating budget to be certified as free cash. Right now, and you alluded to this in your comment, the range is somewhat broad in terms of predicting exactly where free cash is going to be at, because we still have a month's worth of expenditures to spend. We still are taking in literally millions of dollars a day that can go one way or another. We can have some big tax titled payoffs come in. So it can swing one way or another, but based on estimates as of last week, on the revenue side of thing, projecting out somewhat conservatively, we expect between that and the underspending turnbacks from departments, that we'll be in the $9.5 million range. Now that, like I said before, could swing most likely to the upside if some other things happen that are favorable to the city. The range that our policy calls for would be between, and I'm rounding, $5 million and $13.3 million would be the range of our policy. So it's slightly above 5%. It's probably closer to about 6% to 6.5% of our budget would be certified in free cash. Healthy number.
All set, councillor? Thank you. Councillor Sweeney, and then councillor St. Helier, please.
Thank you, Madam President. And actually, to follow up somewhat on the question that councillor Bowen had mentioned in your response about free cash. So given that the line item in the budget that had previously, in the operating budget that had funded road and sidewalks, is being zeroed out, and it appears likely that this will be essentially a permanent shift to supplementing Chapter 90 with city money from free cash instead of the operating budget, assuming that that's the case, has the administration talked about maintaining this commitment of $3 million or so from free cash in the coming fiscal years as a way to provide some sort of stability when it comes to planning for our longer-term paving projects?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. I think I heard enough of the question, councillor. So I don't think it's a given that we collectively can never budget, operating budget funds for roads and sidewalks again, right? Certainly, in the 10 years before I came in as mayor, the city wasn't able to fund anything. I think that was pretty much a direct result of the two back-to-back recessions coming at a time when the city had not been able to build up any reserves going into those recessions. So it was really, there was just no ability at that time. We built the line item collectively, together, right, to 2.7 million over several years. Clearly, now we understand that we don't have the ability to keep doing that in the here and now. But I wouldn't want to concede that we couldn't get there again, right? It depends on, you know, how the economy goes. It could be a few years before we're able to start putting operating funds back in, but that might happen sooner. As far as the ability to use reserves to do road and sidewalk work, I said at a prior meeting that we're going to do everything we can to put money into roads and sidewalks every year. You know, we would really need a crystal ball to be able to promise it. But certainly, the ability to come forward to you tonight, looking for 3 million, and the desire and expectation that we believe next spring will be in a position to do some, I don't know what the number will be. I think it's, you know, it's the reality of, it's the reality of year upon year upon year of the state not coming through for cities and towns in the way we need them to. I think on the road and sidewalk front, we've had some improvements. I mean, the Healy Triskel Administration has done fantastic work the last couple of years. The fact that the voters passed the Fair Share Amendment has brought more money to the table. So I don't want to carry on, you know, I don't want to keep throwing me on here, but I think the answer is, we'll keep doing everything we can. We certainly will look to be able to put operating budget money, operating budget money in in the future. Don't know. And, you know, the good thing right now is we've got a healthy chunk of money to do a lot of work this coming year, if you folks approve this, and we already have some good money in hand. This will really help, you know, get a lot done this coming, this, you know, this construction year that we're already well into.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Al.
I appreciate that. I do think it's going to be incredibly difficult to build funding for road and sidewalks back into the operating budget, given that we're already looking at a structural deficit in FY27 and that there are cost pressures, as Mr. Ailes has outlined, to things like health insurance and salaries and other areas that are harder to control. So that's where I was trying to get a better understanding of what the administration was thinking in terms of how to maintain this commitment over multiple fiscal years. And I'm certainly in favor of approving this transfer because the work needs to be done. I just would like a better understanding of the longer-term strategy, and it sounds like it's, the commitment's there, but the strategy specifically with terms of where you would finance it from in future fiscal years is still under development, which is fine. I do want to follow up on the last piece you alluded to, that we're going to be able to get a lot of work done. Do you have an idea of for the roads listed for 25 and 26 on the engineering website about how much of the work that has been queued up for the current year and the next year will be able to accomplish with this $3 million appropriation?
I think it's still kind of percolating in the sense that we know what's on the 25 We've been, we have brought on board recently a contractor to do some cold-in-place work, and that's a way to do binder, not top coat, but binder, on streets that will, that's able to take some of what they, some of what they mill up and feed it back in with some liquid asphalt and create a real quality binder. And that can be done at a significantly lower cost than doing a binder all with new paving material, and that can tee us up to maybe get some more streets done. So we brought, we RFP'd that service, brought somebody on board, and we're taking a look now. They're evaluating which streets are good candidates for that treatment, and if enough are, that'll save us money to add more streets to the list this year, in addition to the $3 million that we're asking for tonight. As you all know, we've also got the whole 115 KV route, some of which has been done, the balance of which will be done. And we do have Mass Department of Transportation coming in later this year to pave Essex Street from Ellis Square down to Newbury Street. So that's exciting that there, we worked with them on that, and they're going to come in and improve that street as well. So.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
I think, to try to answer the question for the public and for everybody, to the extent there are streets that are on the 26 list that can be accelerated to 25, we want to do that. And as we see whether that's possible, we'll start putting those out there to be, you know, for people to understand. We also, you all remember that we started the process last year of making non-accepted public ways acceptable for paving. In order to spend tax dollars to pave roads that are not fully publicly accepted, private ways, unaccepted ways, we need to have them accepted. And we're able to go through that process with one full neighborhood last year. This year, we're looking, we've begun that process with Sonning Road behind Flair's Cleaners, and we're going to be meeting soon with the Millbrook Road neighborhood in Centerville. Couple of streets that are, you know, well in need, and we've looked to do these streets already, but they then, you know, determined that they need to travel that path of every resident on the street donating a permanent easement for the city from back of sidewalk to center of road to take on the improvements. So we hope to get those processes completed in order to pave those streets next year. But that'll be an ongoing effort with those neighborhoods. It takes significant time from the solicitor's office, the engineering department, and some time from the planning department as well, to work with the neighbors and kind of work through that process. A lot, there's a lot moving on road and sidewalk work. We also, since I mentioned sidewalk, we will be doing, you know, putting a sidewalk on Cross Lane, and we're putting a sidewalk on Toza Road from 1A, just short of the train tracks. So that, you know, both of those will help in the safety area for neighbors. And we have VHB, who has been working on her behalf to get us ready for, get us ready to try to get a truck exclusion on Boyle's Street. They are also working to determine whether there's a way to get a sidewalk between Tualtree Drive and the train tracks on Boyle's, and whether there's a possibility to do that in other parts of that neighborhood. Anyway, lots going on. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. All set, councillor? Councillor St. Helier, and then councillor Spang.
So I had similar perspective as councillor Sweeney. I think, won't belabor the point, but I share the concern about removing the line item from the operating budget. I think, you know, the budget's supposed to represent our values, our priorities, as, you know, and as a local government, I think we've just got to plan on, we're going to need to fix roads every year and fix potholes, and with $173 million budget, I think we have to figure out a way to just do it every year. And had a similar concern about, you know, $3 million now, what is that going to cover? Which projects, you know, why was it three and not two, or why was it three and not four? What are we expecting to get done? And then, you know, at what point can we expect, you know, is this going to, every year we're going to expect to do this, or is this, you know, do we not know that? So I don't know if there's a question there, but similar perspective as councillor Sweeney.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Spang.
Thank you, Madam President. I was curious what the current balance is in the Road and Sidewalk Capital Fund, if we still have funds left in that that are not yet spent, that this $3 million would get added to.
Mr. Ailes, thank you.
Let me try to answer that. So as you know, it's a revolving fund, right? So all the money that's in there currently is programmed and is up on the engineering site as work to be done in the coming construction season. So in the sense of what's available, it's all obligated for various projects. It's just that some of the projects may not happen till later in the fall.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Spang. Councillor Bowen.
Thank you. I was going to ask a similar question, but maybe connecting to some of the other questions. I think one of the challenges I've had with both this line as an operating budget line and this line now as a free cash request is that it is a top-line number. The other really big top-line number that we get that's important is the school budget, that as a council, we only discuss as a top-line number, but we see every line item underneath that. For roads and sidewalks, it's something we hear about all the time, as much probably as we hear about the schools, and don't have those snapshots along the way of what is that current revolving balance, how much is each road costing? You know, I think we all understand some are more complete build-outs, some are more complex engineering. It's really nice to hear that there is consideration of a different construction method that would reuse some materials, come in at lower cost. I think we would all love to see more of that as possible. I know we have, in some years, had sort of behind-the-scenes presentations from engineering and that we're all welcome to go. I know I've taken advantage of it a few times, to go and sit with the spreadsheets with the engineering team and look at those estimates of cost by road and how some of the prioritization is done. And I think it would be helpful to get some layer of that more regularly in the public conversations as well. So I know it is challenging because of particular snapshot moment, you know, if there's $2 million sitting in that account right now, and it's all mapped to specific projects, it doesn't mean there's $2 million available, but I think it would be really helpful to see that more regularly. I think we've talked in the past about the capital expenditure plan being a potential place to capture that. There may be other places as well. So I think the fact that it is a standalone fund, that we sort of see money going into and eventually see work on the streets, but don't see as much of the connection and decision-making process in public, I think that's part of why we have questions every time a budget line that, you know, I also want to support this transfer. And it can be hard in these conversations to feel like we're getting enough. I think the, making the list public and sort of three years out has been huge, and it's been really helpful to be able to point people to that when they ask questions, and I've gotten really good feedback on that. When folks ask questions, I say, oh, there is a list, and here's where you are or aren't on it, but at least it's out there. Generally, get really grateful and positive feedback for that. So the more we can do that, the better. And I think we do want to stop short of telling engineers how to engineer roads and sidewalks, but can still benefit from their expertise by seeing a little bit more of how those different choices allow us to do more or have to sort of save up money for longer to get a big project done, things like that.
Thank you, councillor. Mayor.
Thank you. And councillor, there's a lot there. So just a couple of things. You mentioned the cold-in-place again, and I do want to say that the great thing about cold-in-place, we haven't rushed into it, but mascot's been using it for several years, and the roads they've used it on are wearing well. And so that's, you know, that's encouraging, and it's only me, we're only talking about using it for binder. You're right in that streets need different things. Couple of things to help kind of just set where money, you know, how far money might go. We have three-year contracts for milling, for paving, for sidewalks, for curbing, and they all came due, so we had to get new contracts this year. And so all of the rates are higher for the next three years than they were for the last three. You're also, you're also right that some streets need just a grind, where some need a reclaim. And the difference is, if the paving surface that people drive on is well-supported underneath, if structurally the road is in good shape, then you just need to mill off that top surface and grind curb to curb, I'm sorry, grind and then repave curb to curb. If the street is not structurally sound, then it's what's called a reclaim, where you've got to go in and take all the pavement out, you got to kind of regrade, you might have to bring in some gravel. Generally, streets at that same time need a good amount of work on stormwater management, drainage. So those are the bigger projects where you see a road being taken down and rebuilt, in a sense. Curbs get reset if they have curbs. You also know that, you know, the main streets, the numbered routes are downtown streets, streets closest to the downtown tend to have granite curbing, where neighborhood streets tend not to, right? Granite curbing is vastly more expensive, vastly more expensive than not doing any curbing, because there's, the streets level and the drainage doesn't require it, or what's typically used, what they call Cape Cod berm, which is paving material kind of on an angle. So there's a lot that plays into what a street needs and where it might cost a lot less or a lot more, even if the same length of street. I knew there was something else I wanted to mention, but at least that, you know, and oh, and the cost outs, we can, we can put up a sample cost out of some streets that we've costed out that are being done this year, and that might give people a sense. Why don't, we'll publish that. People can see that and say, okay, well, I have an idea. I know that street, and that street's getting grinded, that street's getting reclaimed, and here's the price tag. We'll put, because I think that can only help people's understanding of how things might proceed. Yeah, again, I knew there was something else I wanted to share, but that's helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Housman.
I know we're all sort of timed, so I'll try to be brief. Probably goes to the mayor. I know I've spoken with mayor. I know I've spoken with our city engineer about some streets that really need to be taken a look at. They do not appear on the city's website for either this year or next year. They straddle, actually, they're more almost in Ward 3 than Ward 4, Prospect and Nolton. How recently was this list updated? Because we have some streets that desperately need and have been waiting for a while that don't show up.
I know. I fully agree with you. I know what I forgot that I wanted to say when Counselor Bowen was speaking, and it really kind of rolls into this, and that's, you know, every two years, we get an updated score of every street in the city, right? And it's, the technology allows the company we hired to really evaluate stretches of road, on longer roads and full streets, or roads on shorter ones, and give us a score of the caliber, the quality of the road surface, and anywhere from 0 to 100, right? And so, that's where we look first to determine what streets to do next. What impacts that list is whether or not there is a need for a new water main, a new sewer main, gas replacement. We only allow National Grid to do gas main work if they're replacing old leaky steel or metal pipes. But they come to us at times needing to go into streets. So, we start with that scored list, and try to work from the first scores up. That gets impacted by work that needs to go on under the street. It also gets impacted by more main streets that are in bad shape, which may jump, may jump the line, because they're traveled by, you know, tens of thousands of cars daily. We're careful of that. We don't want all the money to go there, because people who live in neighborhoods, cul-de-sacs, you know, whatever, their streets need attention too. So, I'm really, I'm excited that this is the amount of money we're able to ask you folks to approve. I'm excited that all the other work is going on. I think this particular year, we're going to see more and more roads done. If you have other specific ones you're not seeing on the list that you want to try to move along, did I hear you say?
Prospect and Nolton were in fine shape until National Grid came through and replaced all the gas lines three years ago.
Not Pierce. Prospect?
Prospect and Nolton.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I was on Prospect a couple weeks ago, thinking the same thing. So...
So, if I vote for this tonight, you'll give a commitment to talk with engineering about those streets?
Well, it's, again, it's, you know, there are more that need doing than we have the funds to do. So, we'll just keep moving, you know, as much as we can. We'll make it go as far as we can. This Colden Place technology is an attempt to make our dollar go further, and allow us to get to more streets this year and next year.
Well, I'm sure that Counselor Crowley and I will be in touch with you and the Engineering Department again about those streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselor. We are creeping past the time for our next public hearing. It seems like we have had a chance to have some conversation here. The clerk tells me that no members of the public were signed up to speak in this public hearing. And so, we will close this one, refer it back to Finance and Property for further action this evening, and we will open our posted public hearing on Order 176. Ms. Kent.
Order 176, City of Beverly ordered that the City Council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, June 16, 2025, at 8:10 PM, at 191 Cabot Street, 3rd Floor Council Chambers, relative to a transfer request of $100,000 from the city's certified free cash balance to be placed into the city's Centennial Fund. And this was in the paper on June 6.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Counselors Rotundo and Sweeney are both recusing themselves from this particular topic. So, for those wondering why counselors might be getting up and leaving, they're going to recuse themselves for the duration of this topic. We will enter into conversation now about Order 176. We just heard Ms. Kent read the order. Mr. Mayor, I see you're at the podium, so we'll turn this over to you to start us off.
Yes, Madam President. Yes, this is a request for $100,000 in reserves or free cash to go to Beverly 400? Well, it's going to...
It's going to the Quad Centennial Fund.
Quad Centennial Fund?
Is that what it is?
Maybe. I remember marching in the Triscentenary in 1968 as a younger brother of a Cub Scout, but that was the 300-year anniversary of Beverly becoming a town in 1668. This is the observances and celebrations of the grant of the Salem Bay Colony Charter by the King of England in 1626, which is the first time Europeans stepped onto the, you know, onto the shores and land of Beverly, what's now Beverly. A bunch of communities started as part of the Salem Bay Colony. So, this ask is to put money into this fund, because, you know, we've looked at this hard for the last year and a half to figure out, what can we do as a city? We have a whole slew of volunteers. We have a lot of people working very hard to make sure that we do properly, appropriately, and in all good ways, mark our 400th birthday, in that sense. So, at a certain point, the city has to be bought in, the city has to participate. And so, this ask of you is our attempt to say, this much money is what the city can do to help this year and a half long, really two-year long, because things have already been happening, set of events come off and be done in a way that the city can be proud of. So, I'm hopeful that you'll see the worth in it as well. That's why we're here with this ask tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Feldman.
Yes, thank you. And, yes, it's very exciting. Who doesn't like a good party? And so, my question about the transfer itself is, is this when we are possibly approving this transfer to this fund? Is this, do we have any idea? Is it completely at the discretion of the 400 Committee then? Are we then using that fund money to fund specific asks, or is it going to be direct? I'm just trying to get a feel for the chain of command, and what, do we have any idea what this would be funding in particular?
Yeah. I mean, we've heard certain events that are being programmed and planned. Certainly, you mentioned the Beverly 400 organization, they're involved in a lot of that planning. This money, by this vote, would sit aside in this fund. We cannot release it without a service contract, or purchasing a goods or service. So, we would be then, the administration, the Chief Procurement Officer, would then look to procure certain services and event ownership over the next year or so, to try to support all those events that are being programmed. Does that, you want to add something there?
But, and, I mean, let's just all understand, the group of our friends and neighbors in Beverly residents who have come together, and have got subcommittee on subcommittee, and are planning a lot of events, are the people who are, you know, who are bringing forward those events, right? So, as I've got to sign off on the expenditures, it's going to come from all of that, all of those, you know, really, by the end of the day, those thousands of volunteer hours.
Right. I understand and definitely appreciate that. I was just trying to ascertain whether it was, like, just a handoff of money, or if it sounds like we are, it sounds like the city is actually actively involved in part of the planning, our part of the planning of these type of events, and using that money for the city's contribution to planning events surrounding that, is what I'm understanding.
Right. And if you think of who's, Mr. Doyd has come on to the Beverly 400 Committee, I'm on it, Xaficio, I guess. You know a couple of your colleagues, either themselves or family members are on it. And so, yes, you're right. You're being asked to approve the money, and it won't come back in front of you, right? So, as you said, Mr. Eels, that, you know, it's, it'll, as the Chief Procurement Officer, I've got to see and sign for expenditures above $5,000?
Really everything.
Really everything, yeah. Through a warrant, yeah. That's true. So, yes.
Thank you, Counselor. I know I have seen a bunch of your hints. I have you in order that I saw you. So, we'll go Counselor Spang, Counselor Hausman, Counselor St. Hilaire, please.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
I had a question, because I think the city sometimes provides funding to nonprofits, and that often goes through an RFP process. Is that something that you're envisioning happening for this as well, or?
It would have to legally, yep.
And then, do you know what you plan to include in that RFP, or will there be a public process around that, or is it just going to be developed internally?
I think that's going to come from the work that the mayor just talked about, with the volunteers kind of coming together with ideas that we can bake into an RFP and get it wrapped up.
If I may.
You may.
Can I also say, from what I'm experiencing, Beverly 400 is not an exclusive group. They are seeking volunteers every day of the week, every day of the year, because there's so much that can be planned and done with, you know, with more people. So, you know, I'd like to think that at the end of this whole process, the community will feel very good about the, you know, the whole observance and celebration of everything, and they'll feel good about how this money, assuming you approve it, is able to be applied to all of those events.
And to be just a little bit more direct, I've had a lot of residents reach out to me about plans and what may happen with Independence Park. So, I'm wondering if this money, you would see it going towards?
No.
Okay.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I think you're looking for a yes or no on that. So, this is expected to go to help with events. That is an attempt to envision some redesign and improvements of the park that would require dollars be secured specific to that.
Okay.
And, you know, and, look, you and I have both heard from and been in conversations, there are some thoughts about making some changes to the park that some would see as improvements and some wouldn't. And so, there's an ongoing conversation. None of this money is intended for whatever is agreed upon and gets done at Independence, which I hope is, you know, I hope there's a real building of consensus and a great, great set of improvements there. But this won't fund that. Is that helpful? Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Before we go to Counselor Hausman, Mr. Perry, I can sense that you're also eager to get up there. So, we'll bring you on up, and then we'll go to Counselor Hausman, and then Counselor St. Hilaire.
I don't know if the word is eager, but I'm up here. First off, I wrote to you, I do recommend adoption of the proposal, conforms to our policies of a one-time expenditure. So, I'm comfortable with that. And as I indicated earlier, with the roads and sidewalks, I wouldn't be spending any more free cash. To address some of the questions that have arisen here on $100,000, it would have to conform to financial state statutes in terms of procurement, 30B, things of that nature. You know, it's not like money's just handed out. They will have to do that. Certainly, if you're interested, I can monitor this for you, report back to you. If you want to report directly for Mr. Eels, it's all public record. So, I guess if I'm trying to give you assurances as a counselor, they have to adhere to the rules and laws, the regulations of municipal finance in order to expend these funds. So, hopefully, that gives you a little more comfort as to how they're going to handle the money if you should decide to approve it. That said, Madam President, I do recommend adoption of the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Counselor Hausman, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah. Counselor Spang's fairly direct question, as she put it, was a primary reason why I had a question, so that clarification is helpful. And to Counselor Feldman's point about everyone enjoys a good party, I, my view on this, this is money well-spent. I think it's appropriate for the city to recognize its history, to learn its history, and to celebrate its history. So, I think, you know, the caliber of people who are working on this project as volunteers is very high, very experienced. They have a good vision. I understand it goes to the RFP process, so it's, there's no guarantee that Beverly 400 would get these funds. But presuming that it does, I think that the money will be well-spent, and the citizens of Beverly will appreciate the expenditure of funds. And just speaking for me personally, the history of Beverly is something that is worthwhile in its own right for us to learn more about, and I think this is a very appropriate way and kind of event in which to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor St. Hilaire, please.
So, I agree with Counselor Hausman about the historical significance and aspect of our culture that this represents. I appreciate that. Just wanted to understand the 100K commitment. Do we have any idea what the total budget for the celebration is? I mean, I heard that would support events. I heard about an improvement project at Independence Park. What is the total plan, and is this meant to be a full funding of that, or is this a 10% funding, or is Beverly 400 raising money, and do they have a goal?
Thanks. So, Beverly 400 has been fundraising from, I think, the day they organized, and has gotten a lot of donations from various, you know, public partners, I'm sorry, community partners. So, and you heard that, you know, this is not intended for the, you know, whatever may or may not happen at Independence Park. That is, that specifically is something that one of the Beverly 400 subcommittees was really focused on, that being a legacy of the 400 celebration, was to do something there because of its historical significance, both as the site, well, within eyesight of the site of the first naval battle in American history, which took place just off the shore, as well as where the Declaration of Independence was first read in Beverly. So, you know, there's a desire by folks on Beverly 400 to try to do something there that's lasting, that is a legacy for the celebration of the group. That is something that they would need to find, and funding to do, capital funding to do, separate of this $100,000. So, and as far as how much Beverly 400's raised from their other partners, I don't have that. But I know it's fairly significant, and it's ongoing. Do you have a number, Julie?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. DeSilva, would you mind going to the podium? Thank you.
Sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't sign up. I was just here to listen. But I'm Julie DeSilva, 201 Elliott Street, and I am the Secretary of Beverly 400. So, I am not the finance person, and I'm, anything I say to you now is just estimates. But originally, the 12 or so slate of events that the committee has put together, the original budget was around $300,000, I want to say. And we have raised probably close to $100,000, and I am so making up these numbers right now. But when we originally came together as a committee, we were given the reasonable expectation that the state and the city would have some funding for this. Excuse me. This just in. $435 is our budget. And, okay, yes, so originally, we had some, not assurances, but were told that we could reasonably expect $100K from the city, $100K from the state. Obviously, a lot of things have changed since we started this committee two years ago, but that's the numbers we've been working on. Obviously, we know nothing is cards and stone. We were prepared to come and speak to the RFP. But to answer Kathleen's question, it would go through all of our slate of events, and all of those events are planned, and they're on our website. It includes the battle, the reenactment. It includes the Vietnam Traveling Wall. It includes our Stories Project. It includes the dog parade. It includes an extended homecoming. Lots and lots of great stuff, and nothing to do with the separate legacy project, which will be funded on its own, hopefully to be grant-funded, and separate from our regular budget. I hope that helps.
Thank you, Ms. DeSilva. Counselor St. Hilaire, follow up?
Yeah, just one follow-up funding question. Community Preservation Committee, is that something these events would be eligible for? Is there an application pending, or something?
The events are not.
Okay.
I believe the Independence Park project is.
Okay. Thank you.
All set, Counselor? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. DeSilva. I'm mindful that we're at 8:30, so I'm going to pause this hearing. We do have a member of the public signed up to speak as well. I'm going to pause this one briefly, so that we can open, and then hopefully recess, our posted public hearing for 8:30. So, Ms. Kent, let's open the public hearing posted for 8:30 on Order 176. So Ms Kent, let's open the public hearing posted for 8:30 on Order 174, please.
Order 174, the City of Beverly, ordered that the City Council of the City of Beverly to hold a public hearing on Monday, June 16, 2025, at 8:30 PM at 191 Catat Street, Council Chambers, relative to a transfer of $15,833 from the Airport Enterprise Fund to magic grant from the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration to purchase a snow removal and spreader for the Beverly Regional Airport. This was in the newspaper on June 6.
Thank you, Ms Kent. I have an entreaty to motion to recess this public, that public hearing to 8:45 PM. All those in favor? Thank you. That carries 9-0. So we'll recess the public hearing on Order 174 to 8:45 PM. This gives us a bit of a window before 8:40, which is when we're slated to pick up our public hearing on Order 77A. I think we're, I think we're rounding out our conversation on this, so I do think we can do that in this remaining amount of time. And I think we were going over to councillor. Bowen and then Hausman. That's the way I had the list. Councillor Bowen and councillor Hausman, I know you had a second question as well.
Great, thank you. And so I agree, it's, it's worth putting in the, the city's stake into this year-plus-long celebration and, and have sort of further questions about the funding pieces. So I think it's 125,000 in CPC funds we already approved in an off-cycle application. Is that right? Or was that the total project? For the legacy project, the Independence Park design project.
My understanding is Beverly 400 is, is going to look to CPC to ask them to approve a match for a state grant they want to apply for?
So I believe it was December that we had an out-of-cycle project. My notes had 125,000, so I'm just, councillor Spang is, is nodding in agreement for the design project for?
Oh, I'm sorry, that, the design, yes, you're right, you're right.
Okay.
They're, they're looking to apply for a state grant for construction and they have an interest in going to CPC to look for a match. I know that. Right? So, but again, that conversation about what may or may not happen there, I think, is very much pending, right? I mean, there's, there's public conversation that I think needs to inform that before it happens.
Got it. So 125,000 so far in city funds through that, that mechanism. 100,000 here, that sounds like it has some flexibility. And then maybe one more request coming. I'm wondering if there are other city costs that might be anticipated for the series of events and whether that would likely come from this fund as either a transfer back to a department or some other mechanism, or whether we're anticipating some direct costs kind of in kind, thinking of things like at times, we cover police details for community events out of operating budget rather than the event organizers paying. Other times, we have the event organizers pay. So I'm just wondering if there are further costs and whether this is anticipated to cover some of those or that would be additional as well.
Thank you, councillor. Mr Ailes.
Yeah, we're having a little conversation back there to, to kind of get our brains around it, but I think it's a little premature to, to, to say right now. It's possible, but not definitive. All right.
Thank you, Mr Ailes. Councillor Hausman, and then we'll go to our member of the public who's signed up.
I'll be brief. Everything I was going to ask was covered by councillor Bowen, because my questions were going to be sort of directed to councillor Bowen and through you on exactly that topic. Thank you.
Thank you. So as I mentioned, we do have a member of the public signed up. Vice President Crowley will be our timekeeper. Although we don't have a lot of members of the public signed up, we like to make sure that everyone gets the same amount of time, keep things equitable. For the public hearings, we're due two minutes to speak this evening. So Aaron Truex, I see that you're already there, you anticipated.
I'm here, I'm ready.
I would ask you to start with your name and address for the record, and then we'll give vice president Crowley a moment. And when you hear the timer go off, if you would just draw your remarks to a close.
Yep, absolutely. I'll be brief. Aaron Truex, I put down Beverly Main Streets for two, at 248 Catat Street. There's a lot that they're doing, Beverly 400 Plus. I know we're talking a lot, a lot about events, but I do want to say they've been fantastic partners for us in really being proactive in what their plans look like, how it works with the overall ecosystem of what takes place in downtown Beverly. They've been in constant communication with us and Historic Beverly. So I don't want to undersell it as it's a year-long celebration because we're seeing so much energy and invigoration happening right now. We've had the most volunteers we've ever had because people have gotten involved in Beverly 400. So I just wanted to offer that while we're looking at 2026, there's going to be things that come out of this, whether it be events or just community goodwill, that we really are excited to see continue. And we anticipate absorbing some of those as well with our organization.
Thank you very much, Ms Truex. Were there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this topic of the $100,000? Ms Visnick, are you raising your hand? So Ms Visnick, similarly, if you would begin with your name and address for the record when you hear vice president Crowley's timer go off, if you would draw your remarks to a close.
Lorenda Visnick, 39 Middlebury Lane, had no intention of speaking this evening, but that previous speaker totally inspired me. I too serve at least part-time on Beverly 400, and part of what I have been trying to do is work as a liaison with the school department. And so there are a decent number of field trips and activities in the schools that will be incorporated. To your point, councillor Hausman, the, of the, the importance of our history and that our children who live right here should be aware of it and, and experience it. So that's another piece that's being addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Visnick. Mr Hanson Metev, this is on the $100,000 to be transferred potentially into the Centennial Fund. And if you would begin with your name and address for the record, and when you hear the timer go off, please draw your remarks to a close.
Yes, Mr Hanson Metev. First name Paul at 25 Iron Street in Ward 6, Precinct 1. I also feel this is an important allotment, that it is important to know our history. I myself intend to make recommendations to this committee regarding, in particular, the father and son, Oliver Wendell Holmes, senior and junior, also the former president of the United States and chief justice of the Supreme Court, William Howard Taft, who vacationed in more than one home here in Beverly. And then lastly, the famous industrialist, Henry Clay Frick, whose property we pass whenever driving on Route 127. So I look forward to the work of the committee and making my own recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Were there any other members of the public who wish to speak in this public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close this public hearing and refer it back to the Committee on Finance and Property for further action this evening. And we do have a few minutes now before we are slated to pick up the public hearing on Order 77A. So let's go to acceptance of minutes of previous. Oh, yes, thank you. Sorry, councillor Bowen, I couldn't tell what you were trying to tell me. Councillor Bowen suggesting we get back our recused colleagues, and that's probably a great idea. Thank you. I think Mr Ailes has gone. Yes. Thank you, councillor Bowen. Thank you, councillors. Come on back. Thank you. You can thank councillor Bowen for your presence back here this evening, because I was just rolling along. So thank you, thank you for rejoining us. I think we still have time before we go to our next public hearing to be able to do acceptance of minutes of previous meetings. And so we'll go to those. We have two sets of meeting minutes we can approve this evening. The first, our regular city council meeting, May 19, 2025, and the second, Legal Affairs Subcommittee Meeting from June 2, 2025. Is there a motion to approve those two sets of meetings? All those in favor? That carries 9-0, thank you. And those are approved. And that takes us back to the time to pick up our hearing on Order 77A. So we'll reopen that hearing, which was recessed, Order 77A. Ms Kent had already read the order. And so councillor Spang, we'll go to you to kick things off. This was your proposed order.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This is the section of Pleasant Street between Ranthool and Park Street. It is a short section of road. As you drive, it's also a one-way street. So as you turn onto Pleasant from Ranthool, you can park on the right side of the road. It was not included in any of the downtown parking district, either as a resident-only or two-hour or as kiosk parking originally. Part of that was to help accommodate people going to visit the veterans home, veterans housing on Pleasant Street. With the changes to the downtown district where veterans plates and anyone registered as a veteran can park anywhere on the streets in the downtown without paying, it made sense to make this kiosk like a lot of the other side streets between Ranthool and Park Street. We've already voted on this as a council, but we needed to hold a public hearing to add more kiosk spaces.
Thank you very much, councillor Spang, and thanks for your work on this.
Yes.
Are there questions or comments from the council on 77A? Are there members of the public? There are none signed up, but anyone who wish to speak on Order 77A? You just heard councillor Spang describe that specific small stretch of parking. Okay. Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing. I'm going to refer this one back just to the full council. We'll be able to report this back out when we go toward the end of our meeting this evening. And so we'll keep this before the full council. Thank you again, councillor Spang, for your work on this one. And we do have now a little bit of time before 8:45, which is when we'll pick up that hearing on Order 174. Ms Kent, let's go to communications from his honor, the mayor, please.
Order number 181, an appointment for Beth Olmixon to serve as Beverly City Solicitor.
I'm also going to refer this to the full council. That will allow us to consider it and vote on it at our special meeting of the full council on the 23rd. So this will be referred to the full council.
Order number 182, a grant for $207,87 from Mass Save Community First Partnerships to support the jointly designed and implemented Beverly and Salem Energy Challenge from 2025 to 2027.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property. Let's go to communications from other city officers and boards, please.
Order number 183, from Adam Travinsky, of the Executive Director of Beverly Retirement Board, a letter stating an approval of 3% cost of living adjustment for retired members and survivors of the Beverly retirement system.
I would entreat a motion, councillors, to receive this and place it on file. All those in favor? Carries 9-0, thank you.
Order number 184, from the city clerk, a new application for a second-hand junk dealer's license for Indy Clover Boston LLC at 47 Enon Street, Unit 10.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 185, a renewal application for Hawkes and Peddles license for Joes on a roll located at 61 Federal Street.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 186, from President Flowers, appointments of municipal employees and residents to serve on the Special Committee for Rental Policies.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services.
Order number 187, from Dolly Nguyen, the Director of Planning and Development, a mortgage discharge request for 49 Federal Street Realty Trust.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs. Let's go to communications, applications, and petitions, please, Ms Kent.
Order number 188, from Aaron Truex, Director of Beverly Main Streets, a request for a waiver of the City Ordinance, Chapter 113-2, prohibiting possession or consumption of alcohol on a public way.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs. Let's go to the number one under unfinished business from a previous meeting. This is Order 26. This was a lodging house preliminary license for 23 Wallace Street. 23 Wallace Street has closed as a lodging house. And so Order 2, Order 26 is designated for no further action. So Ms Kent, we'll make sure that it's recorded that way, but we don't need to take further action in Order 26 at this time. Let's go to, Order 163 was proposed amendment to Chapter 69, Article 2, Section 69, 9, City Personnel Sick Leave. We were going to receive and are still, I think, expecting to receive some updated information, further information from the mayor. And so we'll hold this before the full council so we can get that information and be able to have that conversation. And let's go to, actually, we have enough time, I think, to do, under motions and orders, Order 77A, which is available for a first vote. Right, okay.
Orders 77A, proposed amendment to Chapter 270, Vehicles and Traffic as follows. Section 270-66 Downtown Beverly Parking District, B1 On-Street Parking Regulations Devices. The following on-street locations will be regulated by parking devices unless specifically regulated otherwise in the downtown Beverly Parking District. Pleasant Street from Ranthool Street to Park Street. And this was in the, in the newspaper on June 6.
Thank you, Ms Kent. This is the order that we just heard councillor Spang explain in more detail, and we've had a chance to have some conversation. It is available for a first vote this evening. Is there a motion to approve? Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor? Thank you. That carries 9-0. And so we will be able to vote on that one for a final vote at the next meeting of the full council. Thank you again, councillor Spang, for your work there. This brings us to 8:45, so we'll return now to pick up our previously recessed public hearing on Order 174, which you already read. Thank you. So Mr Ailes, or I know Mr Hanifin is also here. This is the transfer of $15,833 from the Airport Enterprise Fund. And this is for matching a grant. So I appreciate also that we have our grants director, Catherine Barrett, with us. Thank you, Ms Barrett, for being here. Mr Hanifin, our airport director, thank you.
Good evening, councillors. So this grant is using bipartisan infrastructure law monies. If you'll remember, the last federal administration, that was their big legislative push, was the bipartisan infrastructure law. A, a great deal of that was allocated for airports. And so we got, we get about $250,000, give or take, in grant money available to us, starting with fiscal year '21 and '22, '23, '24, '25, I believe. So this grant, we applied for using those funds to purchase snow removal equipment. The last time the airport has gotten new snow removal equipment, I think, was 2001. So we're, we could really use some new equipment. That, we went out to bid, we got one, a single bidder, and sent in a grant application. We got the grant award and they need a, a local share from us. That local share comes to $15,833. So we're here tonight asking for approval to transfer that from our enterprise fund balance.
Thank you very much, Mr Hanifin. Mr Perry, anything that you'd like to share to get the conversation moving along to?
Sure, sure, Madam President. The, it was certified in the retained earnings for the airport enterprise fund, the amount of $496,544. So there's certainly sufficient funds to do the transfer. I'm an advocate for trying to grab more money with a short investment, which I think this is the case, and I would recommend adoption of the proposal.
Thank you very much, Mr Perry. Are there questions or comments from members of the council on this one? Councillor Feldman?
Yes, thank you. And I am very supportive of this and the grant, great work. I'm really happy about this. I just, you had said the last purchase of a snow removal equipment was in 2001. What other equipment do we have at the airport for snow removal? Is it just one piece of equipment?
We have several. So we, the 2001 purchase, it was using federal grant dollars. It was two snow plows. They're both still in good working order. They are kind of the workhorses of our fleet, but they are older. We also have a snow broom that, it's a cylindrical broom that is able to be used on the runways, as well as two large snow blowers to get rid of any snow banks, just because we have to be mindful of wing clearance as aircraft are on runways and taxiways. So that's kind of the extent of our current fleet. This will add a much-needed, another plow to help get runways and taxiways cleared in snow events.
Okay, great, thanks. Thank you, councillor. Other questions or comments from members of the council on this one? Were there members of the public who wish to speak in this public hearing on the $15,833 match for a grant for the airport? for a grant for the airport? Mr. Henson Mitov, please begin with your name and address for the record, and Vice President Crowley will keep the time. Please draw your remarks to a close when the timer goes up.
Just quickly, Paul Henson Mitov, 25 Iron Street, Ward 6, Precinct 1. As I've spoken before with my local city councillor, Matt Saint Elair, I did have the opportunity to live in the community of Prescott, Arizona, which, much like Beverly, also had its own regional airport. Regional airports, in certain situations, are a great asset, a fortune to a community. From being able to provide extra space for medical flights to possibly even one day having some sort of arrangement to have a regular flight to another location in the United States, or even maybe Cancun or Mazatlan, Mexico, which would be most auspicious if they could clear the snow in the winter. I say that with a bit of humor, but I say it in asking council to also approve of this and take the steps to get the matching funds to remove the snow. Thank you kindly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Henson Mitov. Were there other members of the public who wish to speak in this public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close this public hearing and refer that back to the Committee on Finance and Property for further action this evening. Before we take a break for some subcommittee work, let's return to motions and orders. We did have some other orders that are available either for final passage or first reading this evening. And so let's go to Order 116, available for final passage this evening. Ms. Kent?
City of Beverly noticed here, given in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, that the Beverly City Council and the Planning Board held a joint public meeting on May, a public hearing on May 5th, in relative to the proposed adoption of a new floodplain overlay district ordinance, replacing the existing Section 300-48 FOD floodplain overlay district for the purpose to comply with Federal Emergency Management Agency requirements under the National Flood Insurance Program. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file at the city clerk's office, and this was in the newspaper on April 21st and 28th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. Is there a motion to approve for final passage, Order 116? Any further discussion? All those in favor? That carries nine zero, and that is for final passage, thank you. Let's go to Order 169, which is also available for final passage this evening.
Order number 169, Section 270-66 Downtown Beverly Parking District, B3 Time Limited Parking. A, no person shall park a vehicle for a period of time longer than two hours between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday on the below-listed streets unless he or she has a valid resident parking permit, unless specifically regulated otherwise, on Wallace Street from 125 feet west of Cabot Street to Rantoul Street. Section 270-67 Downtown Parking District Parking Prohibitions. Upon the following streets or highways or parts thereof, parking is hereby prohibited at all times. On Wallace Street was crossed off. Yeah. And from Cabot Street to 49 Wallace Street to Rantoul Street. So 49 Wallace Street is striked. And that was in the newspaper at some point.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Councilor Spang and Sweeney, this was your order. Anything that you'd like to say about it before we take a motion? Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Order 169 for final passage this evening? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Carries nine zero as well. Thank you, councilors, for your work on that. And then Order 180, this is available for a first reading this evening. Ms. Kent?
Order number 180, being obtained by the City Council of the City of Beverly as follows. In the year 2025, in ordinance, meaning in ordinance relative to Chapter 270, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 270-49 Off-Street Parking, Handicap Parking, amended Section 270-49 as follows. A handicap parking space to be placed at 27 Giles Ave. And this was in the newspaper on June 6th.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Councilor Rotendo, this is your proposed order. Anything you'd like to say about it? Thank you. So, councilors, we can take a first vote on Order 180 this evening. Is there a motion to approve? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Carries nine zero. And so Order 180 will be available for a second vote and final passage at our next council meeting, full council meeting. Councilors, I would entertain a motion to take a break, a brief break for some subcommittee work. All those in favor? That carries nine zero. Because we had all those public hearings, it just went back to finance and property. We're going to have finance and property stay here, legal affairs in the committee room, and public services in the hall. Thank you.
Call to order, the Committee on Finance and Property. Good evening. We have a couple of orders before the committee, several that were just referred back from the public hearing tonight. First, we'll take up Order 174, which is a transfer request of $15,833 from the Enterprise Fund to match a grant from the U.S. DOT, which we heard about from Mr. Hanifin earlier. Councillors, any follow-up questions, comments? Okay, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is approved, three to zero. Thank you. Let's see, so next, we'll take up Order 182. This is a grant for $207,087 from the Mass. Save Community First Partnership. Ms. Barrett?
Yeah.
What can you tell us about this?
Thank you. So the city received this grant in partnership with Salem from 2022 to 2024, and it was a great partnership focusing on energy efficiency programs, and the city's partnered again to reapply, and we're awarded a three-year grant, 2025, 26, and 27, and it equates out to about $69,000 a year, and we're putting out, there is a RFP bid out right now to, or treated previously when we got the grant, and I believe last time, Green Beverly was awarded the bid, so we're going to be getting responses to that and then awarding that for that energy efficiency grant, so.
Okay. Questions or comments? Councillors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Barrett, for that summary. In reading through the contract, it looks like there's two components.
Do you mean the MOU? The MOU, is that what you're referring?
MOU, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Between the two cities, Beverly and Salem. There's the coaching piece, which would make sense for Green Beverly to be a potential suitor for that and have provided those services in the past, and then there's referenced part-time energy advocates, and the need to pay the salaries of those energy advocates. So my question is specifically for that component, is the city planning to hire an employee, or is that also part of the RFP?
Only Salem's doing that component. We're just doing the bid for someone to reply and do the energy coaching.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're not even going to have the energy advocate? I ask just because that's, I'm not, you know, a lawyer at all, but it reads as though there's a pretty clear, the two cities will continue to employ and/or contract with and manage a part-time energy advocate, so we're actually not including any?
I don't believe we're exploring that component. We have the option to. We use our funding, grant funding, a little bit different than Salem does because of the demographic, so my understanding is we're just putting it out to bid for the coaching portion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Any other questions? Madam President?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Barrett.
Thanks.
I was just curious about the way that the relationship between the two communities has worked, and I think this is a great grant, so I have no hesitation about it. I noticed that in the MOU, it also talks about Salem will procure the services of professional vendor team for energy efficiency outreach on behalf of both cities. I know it says that we'll continue to collaborate on the vendor selection. I was just curious, you mentioned we've worked together before, if you could just talk a little bit about if Salem's taking the leads over procuring the services, what's the collaboration piece look like?
I think the collaboration piece is hiring that element of it, not the coaching part, and then we share that person. I know none of our funds are actually going towards that, they're using their funds for that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to approve Order 182.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that is approved, three to zero. Thank you. We'll move on to Order 177. This is the certified free cash transfer request of $3 million into the city's road and sidewalk capital fund. Councillors, any questions or comments? Discuss this earlier. All those, I guess, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that is approved, three to zero. Lastly, Order 176. Councillor, you're going to recuse yourself?
I'll excuse myself.
So this is the order for the $100,000 free cash transfer to the Centennial Fund that we just discussed. Any further comments or questions?
I don't, I feel like our discussion answered the questions I would have had, so I feel satisfied with that.
And I had plenty of opportunities, so I agree. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved, two to zero. Okay, and with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the Committee on Finance and Property.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone. We'll call the full council back to order, and thank you, we were doing a little final organizing there before reports from committees, so thank you, everyone, for your patience and bearing with us. So thank you, subcommittees, for your work, and we will go now to reports from subcommittee. Ms. Kent.
Order number 174, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a $3,435 grant from the United States Department of Transportation, FAA, to purchase a snow removal and spread vehicle for the Beverly Regional Airport, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Are there questions or comments?
Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Carries nine zero.
Order number 177, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a transfer request of $3 million from the city's certified free cash balance placed into the city's road and sidewalk capital fund, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Are there questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Carries nine zero. Thank you.
Order number 182, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a grant for $207,087 from the Mass. Save Community First Partnership, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments?
Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That carries nine zero. Order 176. So councillors, if you want to recuse yourselves again, and we won't forget to bring you back this time.
Or maybe. No problem. Order 176, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding a transfer request of $100,000 from the city's certified free cash balance to be placed into the city's Centennial Fund, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Are there questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That carries seven zero, and Mr. Perry, if you would bring our colleagues back, that would be wonderful. Thank you. Thank you both very much. Welcome back.
Order number 178, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for Heather Richter, 9 Riverview Street, to serve as a member-at-large on the Community Preservation Committee, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That carries nine zero, and our thanks to Ms. Richter for her willingness to continue serving in that capacity as well.
Order number 184, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a new application for a secondhand junk dealer's license for Indy Clover Boston LLC at 47 Enon Street, Unit 10, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Are there questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That carries nine zero.
Order number 185, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a renewal application for a hawkers and pedals license for Joes on a Row located at 61 Federal Street, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the license be granted.
Questions or comments?
Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries nine zero.
Order number 187, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a mortgage discharge request, 49 Federal Street Realty Trust, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments?
Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That carries nine zero.
Order number 188, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a request for a waiver of the city ordinance, Chapter 113-2, prohibiting and possession of consumption of alcohol on a public way, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Receive and place on file because they do not need a waiver.
Okay, thank you very much. So councillors, I would entertain a motion to receive Order 188 and place on file as recommended.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries nine zero, and our thanks also to Erin Truex, who's the Director of Beverly Main Streets, who was with us for the duration of our meeting and stayed for that subcommittee, and so thank you, Ms. Truex, for being here with us.
Order number 175, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding an appointment for James Hill to serve as Director of Emergency Management, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this appointment.
Questions or comments?
Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That carries nine zero, and Mr. Hill is here with us this evening. Mr. Hill, thank you for being here. You also have stuck with us through the duration of a whole evening, and we appreciate that very much and look forward to the opportunity to work together with you. Thank you.
Order number 186, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding appointees of municipal employees and residents to serve on the special committee at foreign rental policies, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve these appointments.
Questions or comments?
Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Carries nine zero, and thank you to Councillor Spang for her work on initiating that process. That's all, all right. Well, thank you. I also, I know I just mentioned a few folks who stayed with us the whole time. I was remiss in not mentioning a few other folks who were here at the beginning and are still here at the end. Our fire chief, Peter O'Connor, is here with us and has been the entire evening. Thank you, chief. Our assistant solicitor, Beth Oldmixon, who, as we heard this evening, is our mayoral appointee for council consideration at our meeting on the 23rd for becoming, is now our assistant city solicitor, is under consideration to be our city solicitor. Thank you, Ms. Oldmixon, for being with us throughout the evening, and I think everybody else who's been with us, I did get a shout-out, but Mr. Ailes, Mr. Silva, Ms. Barrett, is she still there?
Yeah.
All right, then, not for Ms. Barrett. Just kidding, she just left. She just left. Thank you, thank you to all of you. I know you really have helped us move through our public hearings. We had many this evening, and we appreciate that very much. Councillors, are there announcements or reminders? Councillor Rotundo?
It was actually an announcement from last week that I didn't say, but I just wanted to say, we did porch fest last week, which is extremely successful, spite the weather. It was a lot of attendance, a lot of great bands, which is the intent for next year to go citywide, so it was really a, you know, we were trying to see how it would work out. I didn't mention it last week, but I was reminded by Kyle over there that I didn't and I should have, so my apologies, but regardless, without my reminder, people showed up despite the rain, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor, and definitely an exciting event, and we'll look forward to seeing the next iteration of that. Are there other reminders or announcements for the council?
Tomorrow's meeting.
Yes. Councillor St. Hilaire, I don't know if in your role as chair...
Yeah, we'll resume Finance and Property, we'll resume our budget hearings tomorrow at 6:00, right here at City Council Chambers, and Wednesday is our public hearing at 7:00? I believe it's scheduled for. Look forward to those discussions. Keep it rolling.
Thank you very much, councillor, and thanks for your work in moving that process along as well. Any other reminders or announcements from the council?
Well, as we just heard, we have continuation of our budget process taking place over the next two evenings, and we do have then a special meeting of the full council on 23rd, next Monday. That will be the final vote of the council on the proposed FY '26 budget, but we also do have the ability to take care of a few other business items, and as I mentioned, we'll be able to consider that appointment for Beth Oldmixon to become our city solicitor. Are there any, no, I already asked you, there are none.
Well, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries nine zero. Our thanks to Kim in the BevCam booth, thank you to everybody, and have a good evening. We're adjourned.